Begin, call to order, reporting members present and absent.
McDermott.
Here.
Harper.
Yes.
Slayer.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
For your special meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alamo Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that notice of the time, date, and place of this special meeting was given at least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting to the county clerk of Woods County and was mailed or delivered to all of those who have made written requests and paid the request fee for notice of special meetings. I also certify that at least forty-eight hours prior to this special meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand is seventh day of February 2018.
Presentations from architectural firms for future construction projects. Presentations will include an opportunity for the administration and Board of Education to ask questions and discuss presentations. Our first firm is Triarc, and we'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. A little bit of housekeeping before we start. We do have our entire presentation that you're going to see here. We have handouts that we'll give you after the presentation, above and beyond what you've got in front of you. Also, we understand we've got thirty minutes, so we're going to try and hold our presentation to twenty of that and then have ten minutes for question and answer, if that works for everybody here. Thank you so much for having us. We are Triarc Architecture out of Tulsa, and I started, my name is Scott Bruman, and I started Triarc in 2004 with an explicit purpose to fulfill purpose-driven architecture. What that means is, we target schools, churches, wellness centers, we target nonprofits, that's who we try and do architecture for, organizations that have a purpose, and we truly believe in K-12, obviously, the purpose of education, which you do too, or you wouldn't be here. So, I'm going to let the rest of my team kind of introduce themselves.
So first, my name is Mark Gaway, and I've been an architect for almost thirty years, primarily practicing in Oklahoma. And anyway, hopefully, I look forward to working with you all on this project, just assisting with drawings, design, production, and cost estimation, and ultimately, the construction. So, thank you.
I'm Tony Kopp, I'm a project architect. Normally, it's my job to make sure everyone stays on the same page, all the engineers, structural, mechanical, structural plumbing, civil interiors, making sure the design stays cohesive throughout the entire process and nothing gets left out.
I'm Mary Bruman, and I'm the director of interiors, so I kind of manage and help with the other interior designers in our office, kind of put together drawings, as well as picking finishes, helping you all kind of decide on what those finishes are, what kind of budget we need to stick with, and that kind of thing. It's a very important aspect that we've worked on through the interiors, is just to say, okay, we need to make sure that we, as we select these finishes, that we're doing so with the budget in mind and staying within that budget.
I'm Ethan Arch, I'm an architectural associate. My job is basically to help with the visualizations, so we can communicate our designs to our clients, the whole process, whether that's two-dimensional drawings, three-dimensional drawings, renderings, just things you'll see a little bit.
And yes, his name, his last name is Arch, so he wasn't destined to be taking that name. We're going to talk through these five tenants as we go through this presentation. We're going to talk about purpose, we're going to talk about our past, our experience, we're going to talk about planning and what we can do for you, and some kind of unique ideas we might have for your coming bond, how we can help promote that bond, and then we're going to talk, we're going to close with a personal story. So, with that, we're going to start the rest of it.
This is our Triarc commission statement. So, we basically feel like we exist to facilitate the growth of a person's character, experiences, and memories through the spaces they occupy. Our building design connects your story to bring your unique purpose into reality. So, basically, we feel like you all have your own ideals and goals for your school district, you know what works for your students and for your community, and our goal is to communicate with you all, you are a very vital part of the architectural team as we go about planning a building and a bond issue, so that we can make sure that we understand you all and understand your students, and just that dynamic, and being able to put together a successful building project.
Other firms offer quality, experience, customer service, and possibly great design, but Triarc, we guarantee high quality. There's a pass your bond that Scott, that Triarc has developed, that will help assess the bond and for its success. The school experience, we use next-gen visualization, which is essentially virtual reality, which you'll see here coming up, and data analysis, I'm going to let Scott.
Yeah, we'll get more to that in a little bit.
And then also, great design, which Scott can elaborate on.
And the last thing, it's a little bit hard to stand on this wall, but tell your story. You know, Mary talked about our mission statement and how we hope to connect stories. You guys have a story to tell. You believe in education, it somehow improved your lives, it benefited you, it benefited your children, and so you believe in education. Students who come to Alba may or may not have that same story. They may have a story that they say, I don't want to have anything to do with school or education. So, it's our goal that we can help tell your story to them and connect it, so that your story rubs off on them, essentially, so that they come to the school and we're providing the place that that happens. That's kind of our mission statement in a nutshell. All across the state, these are the last, since 2013, these are different school districts we've worked with, and you can kind of see as it creeps out west, that we've done quite a bit in your area. We've done, we worked with Northwest Tech on a project two or three years ago, we're working with them now on new generators and everything. We've worked with Cherokee Public Schools, we've worked, you know, north of Enid with Kremlin, we've worked in the Ponca City area, so in between Tulsa and Alba, we're this way quite a bit. We even worked with Freedom beyond you guys on their last bond issue. So, we've, we've got quite a bit of, we know the drive here, we've got it, our cars are kind of programmed to go here, so it's not a big stretch for us to drive three hours here. We're here anyway for a lot of things. Speaking of Northwest Tech, so we designed for both Fairview and Alba biomed centers. They have biomed expansions at both centers, and also some math classrooms, and some storm shelters, and things like that. So, we work with them closely, with Dr. Harris there, and Darren here in Alba, two or three years ago, like I said, we're working with them now, and they're doing some sign projects and some generator projects. So, great, great client, we love working with them. Dr. Harris was nice enough to say some nice things about us, I'll start with the second sentence. Each project blends in well with existing architecture while enhancing the unique features of each campus. We were looking for an architectural firm that would design what we wanted, not what the architecture firm wanted. Triarc has definitely worked to meet our needs while designing functional and beautiful facilities. So, that's what we hope to do, is that we're not here to provide a monument to ourselves. We're here to listen, to have respect for what your architecture already is, to try and not divert too much from that, but sometimes, as a case, you'll see the design we've got, we're proposing for yours, that it does defer a little bit from it, but there's a reason for that. There's a function, it's not just to say, hey, let's be different. There's, there's always a reason to what we're doing.
This is Crown Hill High School, and it was one of my projects about two years ago, and one of the main things we wanted to keep was this original facade you see at the top of the existing building. Thank you. We wanted to maintain that and carry it into the new design, and so our original concept was to use it as kind of a welcome arch, and you can see that down here. But as we moved farther forward in the design process, and we got estimates back from contractors, it was kind of determined that trying to maintain that existing facade while demolishing the rest of the building was somewhat cost prohibitive. So, we had to come up with other ideas on how to incorporate that same idea of the existing building, the heritage that had come from the past, and incorporating it into the new school that we were putting together for them. And so you see on this drawing here right next to it, oh, you saw on the drawing. We took these same cast-on elements that are existing and reincorporated them into the new facade, and we ended up using a lot of the existing brickwork that was on the outside, and reused it inside the building, which we want to see on the next slide, but the one after that. So, this is the video of the existing, or the new high school after we finished building it.
And this, the original high school was from 1929, so it was the oldest inhabited high school at the time in Oklahoma, and so we were able to take, you know, we couldn't save the facade because it would just sort of crumble, the contractors told us, so we were, like Tony said, we were able to take some of these elements and put it in the new design to give homage to, that we're not just completely eradicating what came before. And then he mentioned some of the things on the inside, too.
You've seen this bottom picture here, it's kind of dark on this wall, that keystone and all of that brick there was from the existing building, and it's also in the center of the diamond in the middle. It's just one of those things that a lot of the community that was really needing to be able to reincorporate that into a new building.
And these pictures are clear in your brochures if you ever, if you want to cross-reference or anything. This is the band room, and it's also a safe room. I know we're talking about bands and coral room for your project, so just wanted to show that as part of that, that was part of this project. Mr. Patton with Kremlin, he talks about, the last sentence, their staff never hesitated in answering questions or concerns promptly. That's another thing, a lot of times you'll start with an architect, and if you have questions or things come up and you need answers, you need quick answers, we want to always be available for that, and we pride ourselves on getting back promptly, quickly.
This is Cherokee Public Schools, and you'll see a few slides on this one, but basically, I just kind of want to point out to you, on the left is the existing high school auditorium, and we were able to kind of just basically give it a face look. So, you all might find that there are areas where you don't want to spend a lot of money, you have just a tight budget on a few things, but you can just kind of do a few things and add a lot of just character and fun design, just to kind of enhance the space that is a creative space for kids to do music and performances, so we wanted to give it a creative feel, so that's kind of what we turned it into.
Yeah, and we know that you all just did a renovation on your auditorium, essentially, to add the fans and the new lighting in there and everything, but we, you know, there's no color in there, so it may be something you consider in the bond, that we do some minor things of splashing inside of there while you're adding to the outside of that building, it's just, it could be a potential idea. Also, Cherokee, of course, we did the track and field and their field turf and everything, so we've got extensive experience with tracks, you are wanting a track or surfing as part of your bond. Here, we did the full, we did baseball, softball, football field, lighting package, field turf, the bleachers, and everything. I'm sure you all have seen the track, it's, it's not a Class C track, it's a, it's a 5A track or 6A track. And Corey was the, most of you all probably know Corey, he was the superintendent there at the time, and, you know, his, his words, CPS asked the taxpayers to triple their taxes and the bond passed by seventy-five percent. There's no doubt that Triarc and their ability to capture our vision allowed Cherokee Public Schools to pass our bond issue. Triarc is setting a new bar for architecture in Oklahoma, so we're proud of working with those people and proud of working in this area with those different superintendents.
This is Commerce Middle School, and one of the things we talk about is telling a story, and the thing about Commerce is Mickey Mantle attended their, their high school back in the day, and his number, of course, is number seven. And so what we had done was we incorporated the number seven into the plan, and it wasn't, we had a couple of different ideas on how the best way to provide that and the most cost-effective solution to get that seven in there without breaking the budget or anything. As we just, you can see on the floor, we changed the floor materials from one just one tone to another, and then up in the top, we had LED lighting that really kind of lightsens that space up, and it doesn't just cut through this library, it cuts through the entire building, so you can see it kind of poking through in all the public spaces. And it's one of those where you wouldn't really notice it when you first walk through, you just kind of see there's some interesting effects going through, and if you ever just really pointed out, say, hey, there's a number seven in here, and you might ask somebody now, and they'll just be able to tell you that story.
And so it was a bruhaha because it was this high school he attended, and for those who don't know, Mickey Mantle's a famous baseball player, went to play for the Yankees, he was famous for number seven. So, that we, as part of their bond issue, we said, let's design a seven in there, so the people who don't want to tear down the high school, I mean, it was in disrepair, it was falling down on students. And, and so they said, okay, we'll pass the bond issue if you, if you do something, I mean, most of the voters wanted something to reference Mickey Mantle. So, as Tony said, that seven goes completely through, it's the corridor system, it's the lighting system as it goes through, so you can tell with the floor changes, it's not just in the media center here, it goes all the way through the school. And that's just kind of the elements we add as part of the design that make it unique to that school. We're going to talk some, Ethan's going to go through a walkthrough here, and it's a real-time visualization, so this is, this is game engine technology, this is what, if you're playing Halo or Call of Duty or something on your Xbox, he's, he's got an Xbox controller right there, this is what we do with all of our architecture. So, if we're designing your building, you can do, we can do walkthrough situations like this, where you're walking through in real time. This is New Kirk Public Schools, this is their gymnasium project that they're just getting ready to build. We can also do, you're seeing it on the screen here, but we can also, you know, put it in virtual reality. So, we've got goggles here that we can pass out, put it on your phone, you can walk through it, we've got the, you'll see a video here of goggles that you put on your head and tether to a computer, and it's like you're actually there, so there's, there's no hint of, gosh, I didn't know what I was getting with it. There's no more just black and white drawings or just a still image anymore. We are literally walking through buildings before we build them, and it benefits you guys, so that you and your district can all know what you're getting. Other track and fields, Cherokee Public Schools, of course, Jeans Public Schools, we redid their, we did a track resurface there, did new bleachers there, Manita Public Schools, we just finished a new field house, new resurfacing of the track there. I will say that to go with a different color other than blue and red is a $40,000 add, they, they went ahead and did it, but if you don't want blue or that kind of that clay look for track resurfacing, you're going to pay $40,000 more dollars than if you didn't use those colors. Other things that we've done that are related to your track project, you know, we've done bleacher systems, this is Miami Public Schools, their softball fields, we've done accessory buildings like bathrooms and concession stands and all that, we've done a lot of those throughout the state. Let's talk about Alba now. Let's go through your projects, and I came out here to tour about a month ago, Mr. Parkers took me around, and at the time, we were talking about high school, kind of a support building for the fine arts building for coral and band, and we were talking about some improvements to the track. Since then, our understanding is that the elementary's been talked about, that there may be some, some projects there that we add to the bond. We're addressing just the high school, just what I found out about, about three weeks ago when I came up here. So, the scope, this is the site, of course, the scope, here's your auditorium right here. We're talking about this being the scope of the fine arts improvements, both parking and building, and of course, the track and field improvements would happen over here. And as we kind of go through here, I want to kind of talk through some of the challenges. First, Alba has some entry elements that are not as strong pronounced as other schools, so the biggest entry is right here, but there's no parking there. There's no entry essentially that's pronounced on the south side where we're proposing this to go. So, there's an entry here, but there's a lot of things burdensome to get up, a lot of topography here, a lot of hills that make it hard for a building to go in here. So, on the south side, you've got an entry here, an entry here, and an entry here, but none of them are pronounced, none of them are something that you would want the public to come in and they know where to go once they're in there. So, if you have an auditorium, you know, something happened in your auditorium, it would be hard if the public doesn't know where to go, they don't know what entry to come in, they don't know, they're not really a good place for them to come in. So, part of our design is to, is to address this. So, see, here's some of the things we're designing to. So, we want to create a south anchor, so this is the south side of the building, there's parking over here on the north that there is already an anchor, there's an entry over there, it's a prominent entry, people know where to go when they're there. Over here, there's a lot of parking, but there's no real point of entry. So, we want to create a building kind of in this area that's a south anchor to the whole campus. We want to be a little more whimsical and creative with it. In other words, this is a fine arts building. This is beautiful architecture, there's, there's some very classic features about this, but it doesn't say that this is a fine arts more than this does, more than that is, so they're all very kind of more rigid architecture, and so we want to be a little more playful with the architecture while still blending in with what you've got. Band and coral rooms, we're going to have sixteen hundred square feet each of the band and the coral room. Right now, if you don't know, the coral, I believe, meets in the bottom over here in the basement, and the band, of course, is in the bottom over here, so we would be moving those to this area, and those would become other, other areas, but there's no real ADA access to those places anyway, they're kind of a dungeon when you go down there. Three smaller practice rooms, one larger ensemble room, two offices, and some storage. So, that's what we're going to talk about. We've also going to add some restrooms, so this becomes a dual purpose, it's not just adding classrooms, it's, it's creating that new entry for the public. So, if you do have a presentation, a performance in your auditorium that's open to the public or parents, they can come in this new entry, and so it's, it's a lobby, it's an overflow area for them, so it's not just a tight corridor that's right there in front of the auditorium now, it's a, it's a true gathering place, that people can walk in, much like you go to a performing arts center, you know, in a city. So, large lobby gathering area. Update the facade, so we've got some areas that we want to tie in, we want to do a couple of things here with some color variations, not do anything to the material, very inexpensive things, but that we can start tying in here with what we're doing with the new building in here. Create dignified vertical circulation, so let's add an elevator, let's, we've got all kinds of level changes throughout your building, and you have a lift that goes up stairways, but let's have an elevator so that everybody can use it, it makes sense for the public and for the students that need to use it. And reconfigure parking to maximize spaces and add a covered drive-through for the drop-off. So, here's kind of some areas, some of the challenges here. This is a second floor entrance, you can see that long ramp and stairway, this is a first floor entrance, that, this is the same level as this hallway here. So, this hallway here, you go down a little bit of a ramp over here, and then you're on the same level as that entrance there, and of course, this is the end of the auditorium, and that auditorium has a little bit of a ceiling to it, if you remember. So, these are about the same level, that's about two feet lower than that one, but those are, you know, if we're going to connect to it, we got to have, find a way to connect to that and make it easy to transfer all these, all these elements vertically. So, what we're going to propose, and let me preface this, I'm going to back up just a little bit, when we present a design to you, and we've not talked, and we haven't talked to your performing arts people, we haven't talked to, I talked to Mr. Parkers, I talked to the principal of the high school, and they're giving me kind of a general deal, this may change, so this is just the best we can do with the knowledge we have, so don't think that this, we're saying, this is the design, if you need to go for it, and so please don't hold us to this design, we're just showing what we can do and why we do it. So, as we go through here, we're going to try and connect to this area, we're going to move this heating, this package unit up to the roof, and we're going to give a connection points from this point to this point, so that there's, there's going to be an elevator right here, and so these people can exit here, walk through the new park, go down an elevator, and come out the new entrance, which is going to be about right here, you'll see that here. So, this is the whole site plan, here's some new parking here on the, on the east side, of course, this is existing parking, but we're just, we're organizing a little bit more, we've got some staff parking right here, here's that covered drive-through we're talking about, of course, here's that connection to your existing building. Look a little closer here, so this is that upstairs entrance right here, this is the downstairs entrance, we're showing both levels on one, just for, just for brevity here, this is an elevator and a stairway, here's this two-story lobby that you would want, you know, covered drive-through, you walk in here, and it's just a nice big gathering area, it's two-story on purpose, because you have to have two stories to start addressing these, these, you know, this up and down of your high school, of how we entrance. So, we're basically trying to get rid of that big, long ramp, it's a hundred-foot ramp, trying to get rid of those stairs that go up for fifteen feet and everything, and have everything happen internally, so that we can address everything through this stair and through this elevator to get people out the door here. Of course, the band and coral practice here, practice rooms, ensemble, offices, and storage. So, fairly simple building, it could easily be made out of pre-manufactured metal building construction, but we'll, you will see when we, when we start looking at the visuals of it, it doesn't look like a pole barn, it doesn't look like a, what you'd consider a pre-built, pre-manufactured building, but I say that because it could be done fairly inexpensively. So, here is kind of an animation we prepared for it, and as we go around the corner, you see it'll start to reveal itself, it's kind of a new south entry, and here's what I was talking about, that we stained some of those concrete panels, we've got some here, too, that we're starting to tie the buildings in, it's a, it's a little more whimsical, a little more fun, it doesn't detract from the existing buildings, but it creates, the purpose is to say, let's, let's make a building that is equivalent to something that might have been designed originally with that auditorium, at the same time as auditorium, it doesn't feel like an add-on, in other words. We're using some of the same stone that you, that you have there on the front of that circle drive. As you walk through here, of course, this building remains intact, all the entrances remain intact, but you can just see, it makes a little more sense of how we, how we go through, look at this image here, covered drive-through, kind of a nice big lobby area, these are higher ceilings, but it's not two-story space in the coral rooms and everything, but it's, it's basically just an addition to here, but it makes it where now it's a true performing arts center, it's not just an auditorium with a hallway, it's, this whole thing could be considered a performing arts center for the school. Then we go to the track, let's skip past this again. So, the track has its own challenges, of course, the light standards here are a little too close, we all know that, so the end zones don't get, where the edges don't get lit up pretty well, we would expand those out. We've got some bleacher expansion that we need to have, probably need some ADA issues, some ramping to get down to that bottom level, toilets, concessions, maybe, we've got erosion problems with your construction you had over here recently, so we would need to add some retaining walls here, and there you can see, I mean, it's a very unique track and field, as you all know, to sit there and be able to park and watch down there, that, that's a charming aspect to it, but I do think there's some, some things you could do, not necessarily expensive things, that you could really make this where if they wanted to get out of their cars and go down, and they could visit in there, they're perfectly comfortable down there, and there's not, it's not just a trek down big, long stairways to get down there. So, we haven't done much on the visualization of this, other than to show you, we've modeled your whole campus and done animation of the whole campus, this shows the light spread out a little more, we haven't done much with the bleachers and the retaining walls here, but if we're higher, obviously, we would enhance these models, this would be shown to the public, and, and so they could fully understand what's going on here. And I just wanted to reiterate, when we, when we put a model like this together, it's not like a two-hour exercise, it's, we've got, we've got dozens and dozens of hours in this, just for, just to be able to get in front of you, and it's something that we, we, we want to show you how much we care and how much we do want to be part of the Alba family in this. So, pass your bond, we're coming up on our time, so I'm going to, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, I've got a brochure on pass your bond, we do this free of charge, and we essentially help schools pass their bond, we help them market it, and we deal with data, and I'm going to, real quick on data here, this is Alba Public Schools and all the, all the counties around you, you've got Alfa Major, Harper, Woods, and Woodward, and where Alba ranks versus all the schools around you. We have this data for 518 school districts across the state, we have it for the last fourteen years, so we're tracking a hundred points of data, we're the only firm that does this, and what we can show you are outliers, so we can show you that you are thirty-fifth in the state in valuation, you have a very high valuation out of 518 schools, you're thirty-sixth in the state out of valuation per student, that's very high, that usually begets bonds being passed, and you can do higher mileage with that. You are one hundred eighty-fourth in bond debt per student, that's very low relative to the size, these should all be tracking about the same, so you can see that you could communicate to the public, to your district, hey, over the last fourteen years, we have been very low in the taxes we have done, you know, versus other schools our size. Another piece of data is, these are all the schools within your range, that is right around nine hundred fifty students, and you can see the mileage of all these schools, you are 1.94, most of them are in the twenties, teens and twenties, you guys are 1.94, only antlers has a zero, so you guys have tracked very low in mileage, you have not burned your community with taxes for a long, long time, which might mean that, hey, you can, you might be able to, to put a mill on, put some mileage on now, and it's not as, you know, compared to everybody else, it's not as, not a big deal as it used to be. Other things on here, scenario one, I just did some quick numbers with your valuation, if you raised ten mils for eight years, that's eight point seven million dollars that you had raised because of your high valuation. Essentially, all the oil production that happened here in the last five years is subsidizing what you all could have for bond. Scenario two, you raised the fifteen mils for four years, let's shorten the duration, but let's raise the mils at seven million dollars. All, here's the impact, your medium property value, medium property tax, five dollars and eighty cents a month was what your property values would go up, property taxes would go up per month, here it's nine dollars and fifty cents a month. So, it's a, it's a shake at a restaurant, basically, once a month, that that, so you can see that when you talk about a three-million dollar bond or a four-million dollar bond, that's even less than what we'd be considering here, so you have a lot of, you've got a lot of capacity, is what I'm saying, and we could help you navigate that through the data analysis, we could help you show the public that, hey, guys, here's where we stand versus other schools, and we think we can, you know, we think our students deserve this, you know, a better, better package here. Other things we put together are brochures, banners, all this free of charge, if you hire us. I mentioned the VR earlier, this is the goggles that people put on, we can bring this to your board meetings, people can walk through the design. And I'm going to skip this, this is a sample bond video, we do do videos, all of them are on Triarc, it's youtube.com/TriarcArchitects, that's on that pass your bond brochure, too. We've done dozens of videos for schools for helping to pass their bond, usually six to seven minutes, it's a video where we, we, we give testimonies from people, stakeholders talk about it, we have animations and everything. And then lastly, skipping that, lastly, I'm going to close on this. So, David, one of the best stories out there, right? Whether you're religious or not, David is considered one of the greatest stories of all time. Back in the fourteen hundreds, three, with two different artists, three different famous pieces, sculpture, tried their, their take on sculpting David. So, these are, you've got Donatello in 1408, Donatello tried to get it in 1440, and then So these are, you've got Donatello in 1408, Donatello tried to get it in 1440 and then Del Vericio in 1473. So this is what, how the Bible describes David. Kind of he was a, he was a waif, he was a boylike, he wasn't a big, massive, muscular person. And so they all did a literal representation, literal representation of David. Michelangelo came along and Michelangelo said, this is my David. I know the Bible described him this way, but this is my David. My David killed giants, he slayed giants. So he's muscular, he's strong and everything. So what was so amazing about Michelangelo is he came through and he interpreted things differently. Other artists were literal up until Michelangelo and then he said, I'm going to interpret it internally and my art's going to come from that. That's what we try and do with architecture. So we, we try and say, yeah, we could match the building exactly and we could do all these things exactly and, and you'd get a handsome, fine building. But we try and take exactly what you said and we try and say, how, how can that be interpreted that tells your story the best? And so that's what we're trying to do when we do architecture. So when you do, pick an architect, we want you to ask these questions. Who has the most K-12 architectural experience in your area? Who passionately works harder for you with owner involvement at every stage? Who has to pass your bond program? Who does award-winning design since our inception and we've never had a lawsuit, we've never had errors and omissions claims, we've never had liens filed on our company? That's, I started in 2004, we've never had any of those things happen. And we, we have radical communication of your vision and purpose with, with virtual reality, with video, with the design elements, with all those things, with everybody on this team and how passionate we are and we have, you know, we've got youth, we've got vigor, we've got energy, we've got all those things, but we've also got the experience and the wisdom to, to carry that through. So we think the answer to all these things is Triar and we hope you agree.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Question and answer, I know we're, we're at 5:30.
We're five.
Okay.
What is your cost?
Usually on a project that is $3 million or less, 6%. And if it gets above $3 million, sometimes we go down to five and a, five and three-quarters to five and a half percent. It depends on the scope of the project. And that includes mechanical, electrical, plumbing, infrastructure.
When you talk about the bond passage and all that, you work with the company like Stephen McDonald Associates, you work with them?
Yeah, yeah.
So you've associated with them quite a bit?
Yeah, with, with Stephen McDonald and there's two in Oklahoma that have 95% of the schools. It's McDonald usually out west here. And then there's another one in Jinx that we worked with quite a bit on other schools. But yeah, I've worked with, in fact, the Cherokee Bond, we worked with McDonald Associates, with Kremlin, we worked with McDonald Associates.
No pay if it doesn't pass?
No pay. No, no obligation. What, here's our deal with pass your bond. We give a letter of intent to you that's non-binding, but it basically says, if, if the bond passes, we're going to use Triar as our architect. You know, assuming we've negotiated the fees upfront and everything like that, if everything's good with, on both sides of the table of that. If it doesn't pass, there's no obligation. We go away and, and, you know, hopefully you'll get to try again and we'll, we'll try and get in there for the next one, but, but you don't owe us anything. But all of these things, these added value things, don't just help pass the bond, they will help communicate it to the, to the community. Because once it passes, you're going to have an obligation to keep them in the mix, too, and they're going to get mad when it's not, when the dirt's not being scraped and all those things. So you can, there's a lot of these things that help with that process, too.
Okay, our existing bond matures May 2019, but with the explanation there, with the bonding capacity and so forth, we really don't have to wait till then.
You don't have to wait.
We just don't want it to be, to mature and then have to go and let those taxpayers pay less at this point in time.
Yeah, I will say, your, your mileage is so low that no matter what you do, it's going to increase taxes some amount. You know, it's going to be 10%, 20%, something like that, but that's relative to zero or two. So it's, so it's not that big a deal that if it did mature, but.
But when is the last time that we could vote on a bond issue to make sure that we had this going before it matures May 19? Would that be April?
That's where McDonald will have to come in. They'll have to tell you the exact date because they'll know exactly when your last one was fulfilled and what, they sell the bonds individually every year or every two years and stuff, so they'd have to tell you that. Usually it's about six months before you have to pass the bond, before it matures. And you won't get funded. If you do pass it, it depends on what time of year it is, but sometimes it takes three months to get funded, sometimes it takes six months to get funded. So we'll start, we'll, we understand that and we know that there may be a lot of work to do before you get any money and before we can get paid. Sometimes we're clear through the design process before we, it's actually funded and we get paid, but we understand that's part of the process and most, most architects do.
Do you all have questions?
Can you kind of explain your process, your experiences with the process of working on a, on a timeline? You mentioned working with churches and schools and those entities typically have pretty tight timelines. Can you kind of elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so it's, a lot of it's driven by school year, obviously. When kids are out of school, students are out of school and so summer's a big building season, sometimes over the holidays is big. This project, a lot of these are external projects here, so you wouldn't have to affect the flow of, of schools. So it's an all-year project. So the, it's not as critical for construction during this one. It's probably a one-year construction cycle rather than staggering it. Our process usually starts, we come and we meet with the people involved and for, it's usually about a three-month process from start to finish when we get full construction documents out, ready to go to bid. And that bid process is a month long for schools. They're, it's mandated to be a month long, 20, 21 days. So we, we feel like a good rule of thumb on a project like this, that you would be building a whole new building like that, is about 15 months, 15 to 16 months from start to finish.
Would you have somebody on, at what point do you have somebody on site? You mentioned kind of working with all the coordinating, all the different entities, plumbing, electrical.